The April 28th, 2020 Open Finance Meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education. Will please come to order. Please rise for a salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the public which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar? Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Tamborello?
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Delapietro?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: April 17th, 2020, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger Administrative Clerk's Office, posted at Abanell Middle School, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. At this time, we'll have the budget presentation presented by Dr. Zega.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to present the tentative budget presentation for the 2021 school year. As always, our budget goals are to make, revise, and supplement our curriculum programs. We also want to make sure that we maintain class size. We're proud that we have been able to maintain relatively small classes. We were also, over the past several years, spent a great deal of money on technology. And that, those technological advances are, some of them are up for refresh. So we have to make sure that we keep our purposes up to date. We support all of our athletics and extracurricular programs. We had a wide variety of things for students to do other than academics. Our facilities, we are happy to say that we are producing, we have new facilities. And school and safety. We will continue to provide safety personnel and safety upgrades for all of our schools, making them some of the safest schools in New Jersey. And the tax impact this year is going to be $110 increase per $75,000 assessed valuation, and I'll get to more of that in a bit. Our revenue sources are tax levy, and that's something that's determined by the township. We don't really have anything to do with that. Is 71% of our budget. Our state aid is up this year to $53 million, which is just over 20% of our budget. We're using $22 million in surplus, and then we have semi and miscellaneous. Our total budget this year is just over $263 million. Our expenditures, as you see, employee benefits, instruction, and special services take up the majority of our budget. This number doesn't change a whole lot as far as the percentages go. What happens is the totals will increase. Our highlights, and I asked Mr. Bader to talk a little bit about our curriculum highlights. We have plenty of new things for our students to take and plenty of curriculum revisions. So, Mr. Bader, if you can just speak a little bit about our curriculum revisions, hit the highlights.
Sure, Dr. Zegat. We have a lot of, across the board, new curriculum as well as revisions coming on. Some exciting things coming on that are brand new for students, and we have piloted in some schools, but we'll be rolling out to everyone. A couple of these classes. Google Gurus is a way for students to actually get their Google certification. They'll take an exam, and that, pending the test results, they will be able to get that certification, put on their transcripts for college and career readiness. Meteorology, piano, African-American studies, history of sports, ASL III, screenwriting, Phys Ed, project adventure, Aaron's Law, which is a sexual harassment education, and grade five writing. And in the area of revised, we have AP Lit and Lang, instrumental music, AP Music Theory, grade six language arts, music, GNT enrichment, six through eight. We have choir, foods two, a revision in math grades three through seven, ESL K to two, and math ESL six to 12.
Thank you, Mr. Bader. And then our pilot programs?
Yes, we have some brand new classes that we will be trying out and pending feedback from the teachers and students and parents. We will be looking to maybe roll them out across the district the following year. We have illustration. We have fashion design. Benchmark literacy is a literacy program that we're very happy in grade K, and we would like to, we piloted in a couple of schools this year with a couple of really small groups of teachers, and we would like to give those teachers and some new teachers more time to really try the program. And one other exciting thing we have on the horizon is a summer skills bridge program. And I don't know, Dr. Zeg, if you want me to talk a little bit about that, or you would like to. It's up to you.
I'll talk about that one. Due to the fact that we have been, we're going to spend almost a third of our year this year, assuming we don't come back, a third of our year teaching remotely, we all felt, and the Board felt very strongly about this, about providing some extra supplemental instruction for our students. Because as hard as our teachers are trying, and as hard as our parents are trying, and as hard as our students are trying, nothing takes the place of being in a classroom with a teacher. So, we want to make sure that when we come back in September, all of our students are where they need to be academically and emotionally. So, we're going to offer a summer, we're going to call it a summer skills bridge program. We're also going to offer individual instruction for students via distance learning. So, this really is our two features. The individual instruction's going to come from this year's budget, and it's going to continue next year. But the summer skills program, that's going to be part of next year's budget. And we're very happy and we're very proud that we'll be able to offer students some additional instructions, some additional reinforcement to make sure that when they come back in September, that they are fully confident as far as where they need to be academically. And then, of course, we will continue our highly successful Twilight Program, which is our alternate high school at, running at Woodbridge High School. That's also running still now, and we're happy that those students will be able to get through high school and continue and find success in a non-traditional academic setting. Athletics and extracurricular, we will be maintaining all of our sports and extracurricular activities. Our physical exams will continue to provide, and our concussion testing, we will continue to provide. Technology, we're proud to roll out a new district app that will be, it will kind of combine our alert system, our communication system with parents, and our district websites. So, we're rolling into a new company that will replace two or three other applications, and it will all be on one basic application. So, we're happy that we'll be able to give our district websites a new, fresh look, and we'll also be able to streamline our communication with parents. In grade eight, we have a one-to-one iPad refresh. So, four years ago, we provided all of our eighth graders with an iPad. Those iPads are approaching end of life, and we're looking to refresh those iPads for our eighth graders. And as we will continue to refresh our classroom teachers with their devices. New features, and Mr. Bader, if I could ask you to chime in again about our new features, all these learning platforms that are oh-so-important right now that we're on distance learning, but we'll continue to use these next year.
Yes, Dr. Zegat, and, you know, it has been, we've never used our digital platforms more, and obviously, they have been very valuable tools. So, I appreciate the Board's continued support and your continued support of these programs, which are varied. Vocabulary is a really fun way to use rap music and rhyming to actually learn about content across the board. Not only language arts, but a lot of math, history, and science are also integrated. Learning A through Z gives students the opportunity to have leveled readers, and students can actually move up in reading levels. It has been a very valuable resource as really a digital library for students at home right now. Brain Pop, again, is content really across the board, more geared for elementary and lower middle school, but still a great resource. iXL is a platform that uses AI to give students practice at their level and slowly bringing up the rigor. And students, when they successfully meet a certain percentage of questions, they move up to the next level in math and language arts development. New ZLA is a really great program, primarily at the middle school level, but we do integrate in high school as well, a little bit at the elementary level, where it's really current events, and these current event stories are broken down and written on different reading levels. So, every student can read the same content at various levels of rigor and really enjoy the same conversations about what they read. And ESGI is a relatively new one that we're using in grades K and a little bit in grade one. And again, that's a way for teachers to look at really every assessment they give students in kindergarten and see how they're doing at the different standards in language arts and math. Albert IO is specific to, really started out specific to AP practice and AP content, but other teachers can use it at the high school level. It's been rolled out. Alex is, again, a mathematics tool that is really heavily relied upon in our foundational course of Algebra I. And Naviance is a program that we use to starting freshman year, and it really takes in digital content. So, it populates common app questions and essays. So, a student actually starts freshman year in populating all the different information they're going to need for college applications. So, we're real happy about the resources we can provide teachers and students.
Thank you, Mr. Bader. Special education, we're opening an autism program. We're opening another preschool disabled program. We're opening additional LDK and ICR kindergartens. We're continuing with, ESS is a program that we started this year, and that's for students who are struggling either emotionally or for one reason or another at the elementary level. And we're expanding, we were happy with the results so far with that program. We're expanding that, or we hope to expand that program to the middle school level. Ms. Bear, if you're on, can you give us a couple of highlights, please?
Yes, Dr. Zegat. The ESS program offers clinical counseling, supports, and services for students as well as their families. We're excited to introduce that at the middle school level. Our preschool and autism programs are expanding just due to need. We're going to be working on some of our curriculums, our preschool curriculum, as well as refreshing our health curriculum for our autism population.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Okay, our facilities, school district projects, we are continuing with our fire alarm system upgrades, asphalt and concrete paving, and we have a large project with the Woodbridge High School HVAC system, which is replacing, basically replacing the entire heating system. We're going to add an air conditioning system, and this is coming out of reserve, cap reserve, that we have been kind of squirreling away the past couple of years to make sure that we can fund this, and it will have minimal budget impact. The boilers at Woodbridge High School in that heating system is original, and we, it's reached its end of life, and we hope to be creative as far as funding that project. But it will be funded again next year, should the budget be approved. Safety and school security, Dr. Massimino, if you could give us a couple of highlights from safety and school security?
Sure. We've, we're in the process of applying to make sure that the police radios that we have, we started this a few years ago, which was a rather ingenious way of giving us direct access to the police and our school patrols. We'll continue with that in making sure administrators, secretaries, and all relevant personnel have access to those radios, as well as the blue lights that have been installed at every one of our schools to notify those people outside of the building that there is either a drill or an actual incident within the school. So, we've made nice progress with that, and we'll continue on next year.
Thank you. And to our credit, the state has extended the deadline to apply with Alyssa's Law. We are relatively 100, well, not relatively, but we are close to 100% compliant with this, even though the state will be extending the deadline. So, we're happy that we are ahead of the curve on that one. We have additional revenue sources, our SRECs, which are generated through our solar energy program. And this is an estimate, but next year, we look to recoup about $1 million worth of SRECs and E-rate, and that's a funding program for technology improvements. And then we have our grants. We have our safety grant, our JROTC grant, and our MCEA grant. That MCEA is Middlesex County Educational Association. Our vending commissions with, from our vending machines throughout the district, we will be generating about $120,000 next year, and our interest income is close to $1 million. Now, our per pupil costs, again, we are way below the state average as far as per pupil. You see that our state, our per pupil costs actually went up a little bit, went up slightly this year, but we are well under the average cost per pupil. And this is a number that's, it's, people often ask, well, if you take the number of students and divide it by, or the total budget divided by the number of students, it's a little bit more complicated than that. This number is generated by the state, and it's sent to us as a part of their computation. So, it's not quite the total budget number divided by the number of students. Tax impact. Now, last year, we were able to take part of our state aid and basically use it as tax relief. So, whatever state aid we get, we, last year, we sent and back to the public and use it as tax relief to keep our tax increase down. This year, because of distance learning and because of the tentative nature of the state budget and the national budget, we're not quite sure about our state aid number. So, we haven't heard anything official yet, but if, going back to one of the original slides, our state aid has been promised to us at $50 million. There is a chance that because of everything that's gone on with closing schools and shutting everything down, that we may not get that number. Now, we have to have our budget approved by the Board of Education and sent to the state by May 14th. So, at this point, we think it's best to make sure that we keep all of our state aid in the budget, so that if the state comes back to us and says that they are not giving us what they said they were going to give us, then we'll still be okay, and we won't have to cut any programs. So, our state, our tax impact, our tax increase this year is more than it was last year. And if you look at our 15-year trend or 16-year trend, we had a really good run. We've had a really good run since the 2010, 2011 school year. As you can see, it's gone down every year. The average of that, if you look at it, is probably around $80 per year. So, this year, we're above average, but last year, and for the past five years, we've been well below the, an average of about $80. And if you look at it in the long run, that's what our tax increases look like, as far as the actual tax number. You could see that they, the increase is pretty linear. It's pretty steady. So, the tentative budget, the public hearing for the budget, of course, is tonight. The final budget adoption is set for Thursday, not at Abanell Middle School. It'll also be broadcast via this website. And now is the time, if anyone has any questions from the public, to either email me or call me at that number. And now, I'd also like to open up the, open up the meeting to the Board if anyone has any questions about the budget presentation.
Mr. Delapietro?
Mr. Harris?
Yes, thank you. I wrote, you know, some thoughts here. Now, first off, I want to thank the administration for always putting together a budget that invests in our students, our teachers, and our facilities, and our grounds. Of course, want to extend, you know, all the work to the business office, our business administrator, Mr. Wolferman, for putting the work in and answering the questions that many of us have regarding some of the line items. You know, there are many things in the budget that are noteworthy, and I want to thank the administration, you know, Mr. Bader's office, for new and revised curriculum as we do every year, new pilots, refreshed curriculum, new textbooks. I thought that was, that really jumped out at me. We're spending another $300-plus thousand on new textbooks, something I hear from parents, you know, they're sometimes not too happy with the condition of, or the age of certain books. So, this year, we're putting even more money in than we typically do. So, I want to thank you for that, as well as the continuation of some of those online software programs. Mr. Bader, Dr. Zegat, thank you for doing those. Of course, we're continuing with our technology upgrades, as well as, you know, new school counselors and speech pathologists. Additionally, we're investing, as we always do, in our teachers through professional development. It's a credit to, you know, Dr. Massimino, as well as keeping our class sizes appropriately sized. And finally, on facilities, we're continuing to invest inside and outside the buildings, you know, from, you know, the non-sexy items, if you will, the HVAC system, that's a giant mega multimillion-dollar project. The administration really deserves a lot of credit for getting that done. I know Mr. Treeblosser's, you know, been headstrong about getting that project finally done after probably about 60 years now. And of course, security, we've, you know, Mr. Small continues to push that issue harder than anybody. So, I wanted to, you know, highlight those things, but as the Finance and Insurance Committee knows, for over a month, we've been fighting about the tax increase. $110 is, in my opinion, just a little too much for our constituents, given the COVID-19 experience, the impact that it's having on our economy, as well as on the wallets of our constituents. I always credit the administration for long being underfunded by Trenton and using the limited resources that we do have, that we do ask the taxpayers for, and what we do get from Trenton, spending that wisely. And since when I joined the Board, we were getting about $23 million a year from Trenton. Eight years later, we're getting $54 million from Trenton. And I'm afraid that we are starting to backslide a little bit into becoming too comfortable with additional resources and getting away from being super efficient. And so, my pitch to the Board, and, you know, legally, we are, you know, required to pitch this tonight if we do want to see it enacted on Thursday, is that we try to get that tax increase from $110 down to my proposal, and I know Mr. Tamborello, the Chair of the Finance and Insurance Committee, would agree with me, is get it down to about $75 to the public. This decrease represents about $1.5 million. The money would come from the surplus, about $22 million. So, one and a half million dollars out of that would go towards property tax relief to the tune of about $35 per average household. It doesn't seem like much, but I think it matters. In my eight years campaigning for, not only myself and campaigning for fellow Board members, I've heard it over and over and over again, and I think it's only increased the longer I've been around, that our taxpayers want more relief, or want relief in general. So, again, my proposal is reducing the tax levy, with the tax increase, the average tax increase on the average assessed house of $75,000, from $110, as the administration proposes, down to $75. The administration has done its due diligence, has proposed, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, it makes a tremendous amount of sense. And from a legal standpoint, that we are entitled as a Board to tax up to the 2% levy cap. I recognize that. I recognize that we are foregoing future revenue. I know from a fiscal standpoint, that is the smart thing to do, arguably the responsible thing to do, but from a taxpayer standpoint, I think it's only right that we propose a more modest increase. Last year was 35. We've been trending, as Dr. Zegat just said, trending in the right direction. I just think that, you know, with tax increases inevitable year after year, going from 35 to 110 is a dramatic increase, and a more reasonable number is $75. I propose this to my fellow Board members. It's up to us to talk about this over the next couple of days, and I hope, you know, you're willing to not only take my points of view into consideration, but also hear from the administration, hear what they have to say. They have a lucid and a fair argument to be made, and it's up to us as the nine Board members who represent the 100,000 residents of Woodbridge Township to pick the right number, and I hope you consider my position. So, thank you to the administration. And before I turn it over, I wanted to just ask, you know what, I'll let some of the other Board members ask. It took up enough of your time. I'll ask just a couple of questions on the budget when everyone else is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other questions from the Board?
Mr. Tamborello has his hand up, Mr. President.
Mr. Tamborello?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, for attending this. This is our first Zoom Board meeting. Hopefully, it'll be the last, and we can all get together relatively quickly. First and foremost, I hope everyone is healthy and your families are well. I also want to give compliments to Dr. Zegat and his team for apparently what's going, it's certainly not seamless, and it's not business as usual, but from all, everything I've heard, after that first week of some growing pains during the shutdown and our schools being closed, from everything I'm seeing, hearing, and reading, I think you and your team have knocked it out of the park managing this crisis. So, again, you all called on the phone here. I'd like to publicly compliment you, and I think a lot of the Board would like to do the same. So, thank you for, Dr. Zegat, for your leadership during this whole thing, and your whole, in your whole team.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris was correct. We have been talking about this for a month since the, since the tentative budget came out. And, you know, we do have some concerns. And first of all, the presentation was great, as always. It is a great synopsis of how we spend our money and what we're showing the public, being proactive in so many things regarding technology and curriculum, security and facilities. It's great. But I have to echo Mr. Harris's sentiments on the tax levy. Maybe a question for Mr. Wolferman and Dr. Zegat. Again, the presentation, great, awesome presentation as always. It shows exactly in that little summary what we do and what we're going to do. Two slides. Obviously, page four is the money slide. Finance Committee, that's what we, that's what we're about, the money slide. You know, obviously, it's $263 million budget. Line item in that slide has a $22 million Line item in that slide has a $22 million surplus, which again, shows somewhat fiscal conservative spending in that we don't expand or exceed our line item budgets, and that's where we have unused funds. And all of that goes into the surplus, rolls over into what we can use the ensuing years. Next slide I want to look at is 13 with the additional revenues. And again, discussion on the Insurance or Finance Committee. Looking at those additional revenues, if we were to take a portion of those additional revenues, which in total is over $2.2 million, if we took a portion of that, dedicated it or earmarked it toward relieving the tax levy, a question through Dr. Zega and all occult, would any program get cut? Or would any job be eliminated if we were to earmark a portion of those additional revenues toward the tax levy reduction?
Mr. Tamborola, the answer to that question is no. Brian, can you add some more detail?
Yeah, the one thing I would say is our budget does include the SRECs already budgeted. So therefore, excuse me, not the SRECs. The miscellaneous interest income is budgeted. So therefore, that could not be used to offset any tax levy. The SRECs, however, could be used to offset tax levy.
Understood. So in that one sheet, again, we go back to a $2.2 million in additional revenues. Between that and the surplus line item, getting back again to what Mr. Harris was saying, this is what we're going to propose to the board. And again, we have 48 hours to decide this. And, you know, I'll make calls tomorrow and see if anybody is on board with this. Certainly, I think a lot of you have known about this, and we've discussed it. Or you guys have, you know, the tax levy, we've all had the budget. And I think we need this final 48 hours to really continue the discussion and see if, as a board, we come to the conclusion that we want to dedicate some of this money toward tax relief. I think the $110 levy this year per household at assessed $75,000, I think that is excessive. And I'm really looking to see how and if there's any support to lower that. And again, we got 48 hours to do it. We're not going to propose to extend our deadline. I think we do make the decision on or before April 30th, which is Thursday. And again, that gives us some time to discuss. And I know you guys all know this thing inside and out. But we need to utilize these last two days to decide, you know, what the direction is. And I hope you guys can support myself. I hope you can support Dan. And let's see if we can come to an agreement on how much we can use to lower this tax levy this year. And I certainly appreciate the time. And I appreciate everybody being deliberate on this and their thoughtfulness. And let's discuss this some more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Thank you, Mr. Tamborola. Mr. Treewasser?
Under normal circumstances, I would agree 100% with Dan and Etio. I think they make very valid points. However, my concern is, is that there's a lot of uncertainty in what's coming down the road. There are variables that we cannot predict at this point. We may have to take consideration into social distancing, which would significantly impact our transportation lines. We may have to take into consideration that we have to buy PPE for students, staff, and support staff, which also could have a significant impact on us. And I think that if we really want to make substantive return to our taxpayers, that the amount we're talking about reducing is not really significant. And that we could take the entire year, and the more money that we can generate to go to surplus, will go back to tax relief. And then we can certainly make significant and marked improvement going forward. But I just think that us being a little bit short, and I know a million and a half is not a ton of money in our budget. But as you know, the largest portion of our budget is taken up by salaries related and benefits. And unfortunately, if we cut ourselves short, even as little as a million and a half last year, unknowing to anyone and out of everyone's control, we had an additional expense that was unbudgeted for in special needs transportation. We also had additional expenses in our health and environmental costs. And if we're not careful, we could find ourselves having to cut programs as a last-ditch effort to be able to supply the services that we need to. I agree. I think that our community is absolutely concerned about our taxes. I think they're concerned about what we deliver for their taxes. And I think that the programs that we have are moving in the right direction. And as we do more implementation with technology, there will be initial costs that are not normally ones that'll be going forward. We have the iPad refreshment. We have licensing agreements. We have other things. My only concern is that if something goes wrong, and we have come in under what we are allowed to come in at, there's nothing we can do but cut programs, staff, or services. So like I said, Dan and Etio, I agree 100% on a normal basis. But we all know that this time, right now, there is nothing, absolutely nothing normal about what we're dealing with. So thank you all.
Mr. Treewasser, any other comments from the board?
Mr. Del Pichot?
Mr. Harris?
Anyone else want to go before me? I just had a couple pointed questions, easy ones, I think. The Twilight Program, is that, it was proposed at one point. I know it's a little costly to do it. But is that just going to be a semester next year or the full year? Dr. Zega?
Mr. President, Mr. Harris, just a half year.
Just a half year, okay.
Beginning of February.
Okay, all right. Then the Chair, Mr. Wolferman, Alyssa's Law, and perhaps Dr. Massimino. If I remember correctly, if we had, as a district, had done some of those improvements before the law had passed, we would be eligible for money that the state was appropriating through the issuance of bonds to be refunded for some of those expenses. Because, you know, the state, you know, was supposed to pay for Alyssa's Law. Has the state given us any guidance as to applying for some of that reimbursement by any chance?
Mr. Harris, I haven't received any full definitions of how it's going to happen. So we're still waiting on the guidance.
Okay, all right, great, all right. I know we're, from a security standpoint, we're far and ahead of most other districts. So I'm sure we did most of what we needed to do. Now we have a chance to actually get some money back. Second to last thing, may I have, Mr. Bader, the proposed budget for the piano course for the three high schools, piano one, would you be able to provide that? No rush on it. Thank you, Mr. Bader. It looks like you're outside there.
Yes, sure, Mr. Harris.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bader. And last but not least, you know what? It was a minor thing. It was a small shout out. Just bring it up at the next board meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your time. And perhaps someone from the public has a question.
Mr. Harris, is it any more questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. At this time, in keeping with our past practice, we will open this portion of the meeting for questions and statements from the public regarding the budget. If you wish to say something, please call 732-602-8472 or 732-602-8550. When prompted, please state your name, section of town, the township you live in. And please limit your comments to five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1000D, 1001D. We'll give them a few minutes to see if anyone calls in.
Frank, this is being broadcast, just for clarification, this is being broadcast on the Channel 35 Live?
Yes.
President, while we're waiting?
Mr. Tamborola?
If I may, to Dr. Zega, have you received any indication from the state on timelines and what we can expect? So the public knows that, you know, I know there's a lot of things that are unknown. Any timelines on when we will have some decisions and maybe numbers relate to us?
Mr. President, Mr. Tamborola, no, we have not. The one thing that the state has held fast on is the deadline for the budget. As I said, the budget has to be approved by all the boards of educations in the state by May 14th. So we really haven't heard anything. So I have someone calling in. If you have a follow-up, we'll get back to that. Yes, caller, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, can you wait for them to talk?
No, go ahead. You're on the clock.
All right. David Pinkwitz, Dizlin?
You, go ahead, Mr. Pinkwitz.
Okay. I just hear people talking on the livestream. All right. So I have a couple of comments and...
If I can, Dr. Z, he should probably turn down the volume on his, whatever source he's hearing, the meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Pinkwitz, that would probably help. Yeah, if you turn off the live broadcast, so it's not looping back on us.
All right. You good?
Good.
All right. So I have one comment, and I wanted to thank Mr. Harris, Mr. Tamborola. I do think the tax increase is a little bit high. You know, it's the highest, I think, in nine years, based on what I saw in the presentation. So I, you know, I can't speak to what can be done, other than the comments that have already been made. But one question I might have related to that would be, you know, I've been in companies where, at one time, they would refresh computers, for example, every three years, but then chose to delay it. You know, and one question I would have, I think that was a relatively high dollar amount, not enough to cover the amounts we're talking about reducing. But is there an opportunity to potentially delay some of the technology refreshes without harming, you know, what you're using it for? Perhaps, you know, to accommodate a lower tax increase. Obviously, that would push it into another year. You would eventually have to do it, no matter what. The other few questions, I assume you're, well, I assume you're following the same rules that ask all my questions upfront, and then you'll comment at the end. So one question more generally is if we know how much we're spending, more or less, because of, in this current budget year, relative to the, you know, schools being closed. Obviously, certain salaries are probably identical, and that's not being reduced. But in other cases, you know, the energy for the schools, I would assume, is going down, since there's fewer people in the buildings. You know, and other, you know, costs of certain extracurriculars are going down. Maybe not significant, but it's still some money. So do we know what's costing less, what's costing more? Perhaps, you know, online stuff might cost more. And then in terms of the future year, if we have any guidance yet, you know, we don't know what the new school year will bring. So for example, if let's say they allow extracurricular activities, sports, to occur, but don't allow fans, what happens? You know, you might have a security cost, you know, you pay for police or whatever to be in the crowd. If there is no crowd, or minimally, just want one to make sure there is no crowd. You know, do we know what happens if we don't spend the money? You know, so we budget for it. Normally, you expect to spend it, you move it around, and you expect to spend it by the end of the year, and you only have some rules on surplus. Has the state given any guidance? You know, let's say there is a big surplus. You know, perhaps if you limit certain activities, but don't limit school itself, where you have those expenditures still occurring. And then the other comment was not related really to the budget, but I believe this is the only opportunity for public comment today. And then there was a, you know, a principal, Dr. Lottman, from Wilbers High School, had announced his plans both for the prom and for graduation. And then it got press coverage subsequently. And there were comments that board members supported it, the administration's supported it, the bayers supported it. But he also made a comment that it would always follow CDC guidelines. So this is more of a question. You know, as far as the prom goes, I think it's wishful thinking that we'll have crowds allowed over the summer. No harm, no foul, if either it can occur or it can't. But in terms of graduation, which assumes that we're not allowed to have a crowd for graduation, we can't have an in-person graduation. I guess my question is, CDC guidance right now, is if there's a substantial spread in the community, which I believe is still the current status of New Jersey, that non-essential gatherings of any kind really shouldn't happen? Not just more than 10 people, but literally no gatherings. And the gatherings we're talking about would be the principal and vice principals waiting for cars. I guess well over 300 cars, potentially, if everybody participates, parading from the mall to the school. And I've just been curious how that would comply with CDC guidelines.
Good, Dr. Z.
Thank you, Mr. Del Pichot. If I could remember all the, we'll start with the Wilbers High School graduation. You know, we did go through the proper channels as far as trying to get the approval for that plan and under the understanding that if things should change, that that plan may change. At this point, it looks like things have changed. So we will go back and revisit that, the original plan for the Wilbers High School graduation. One of the things that, you know, that I want to make sure that everybody understands as far as, you know, school closing, which it looks like it will probably be through the end of the year. The board feels very strongly, and the administration feels very strongly, and the staff. Also, that all these end-of-the-year events, the milestone events for the students, especially the high school seniors, you know, the high school graduation is probably the highest priority of these events that we want to make sure that, in one way or another, our students get to experience. Some of the other things, as you said, the prom, it looks, it would be tough to have a prom at this point, based on the guidance that we're getting from the state. But, you know, we have a, we have some time before, over a month before the end of the year. So things may change. They may change for the better, they may change for the worse. But we're, you know, that's one of the things, like I said, the board and the administration feels very strongly that we need to give our students, especially our high school seniors, some, something to remember. As far, now you're, if I, I'm trying to think of your other questions. The, oh, as far as the expenditures, yes, we are saving in some spots, and we are not saving in other spots. So as far as our budget this year. But whatever we do save, that goes into surplus for next year, and we won't be able to spend it until the following year. So it's not like we could save up this year and then spend it next year. And Mr. Wolferman, if you could give us some more details as far as that?
Yeah, that's actually accurate. We would, anything that rolls into surplus would then be available to us in two years, as Dr. Zega said, at which point it could be used for the budget and to offset some of the budget. Also, one thing we did get is that there's a law that says we have to pay all our personnel and vendors as though schools were open, so we are required to do that. Other guidance than that, I haven't heard anything.
Right. We're all, the one thing, as I was, you know, answering Mr. Tamborola's question, the one thing that really hasn't changed during all of this is the timeline for the budget. And like I said, by May 14th, the board, you know, the boards are required to approve a budget and submit it to the state. So we have, we have a little over two weeks to make sure, to make all these decisions. But, you know, that tells me the fact that that timeline hasn't changed, that, you know, they're requiring us to get our budget in, and the only state aid numbers we can base that budget off of is what they told us. But like I said, everything changes, everything changes every day. So if, yes, our state aid was 50 million, you know, next week it could be a different number. We don't know. So it's very tenuous at this point to go ahead and approve this budget. And we certainly understand the task that the board has in front of them to try and figure all this out. But it's, things are changing, and things are different every day. Things are different this week than they were last week. So, you know, we'll just do our best to try and move forward and deal with whatever the state, whatever the state sends us.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Okay, thank you, Dr. Zaga. Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Is there any more phone calls, Doc?
Let me check. Let me see if, I'll see if anyone else is on hold. Mr. President, I'm told that there is no one else on hold at this point?
Okay, well, if there's no one on hold. Dr. Zaga, I'd like to thank you for presenting, presenting the budget tonight. Mr. Wolferman, same, you know, for you, you know, for putting this together. We'll ponder over it over the next two nights. And we'll meet again on Thursday, we'll have our, have our vote. Okay, at this time, there's no, any further phone calls or questions? The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Yeah, a motion by Mr. Harris, have a second?
Second.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just had one question, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I just had one question for Mr. Wolferman, actually, and Dr. Zaga. First of all, thank you, everyone. I hope everyone is safe. Say arbitrarily speaking, say the state gives us $0 and we keep the $110 as the tax increase for our community. Will that cover us for the next year?
No.
Mr. Sedana, we would have to go back and rework the budget at that point. Because any change to the budget would have to be looked at on that greater scale.
Okay.
I'm assuming that, should that happen, that we would have some time to redo the budget or change some of the figures based upon that. So, but as of now, we just haven't heard any guidance.
But through the Chair, Mr. President?
Dr. Zaga?
Mr. Sedana, so if the state gave us nothing, that would be roughly 25% of our budget. Or 20%, I'm sorry, 20% of our budget would be, we wouldn't have. So that 20%, that $50 million would have to come from somewhere. So we'd have to cut programs, probably personnel, probably extracurriculars. You know, there are, there are things that we don't want to cut in, but we'd have to take a hard look. Then if something like that happened, and, you know, we can go back to 2008 when we had a similar budget crisis, if you want to call it that. We went back and we had, we had to cut a lot of things. You know, that we, the school year would still go on, we'd still have instruction. But it would be difficult. The other thing, too, I think is important, as one of the board members pointed out, the next, next year in September, when we do get back, we don't know yet as far as what the schemes will be required as far as personal protection and what the board would need to supply. We don't know what social distancing will look like when we come back. So it's, there are many, many unanswered questions here.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I actually just, the reason I brought this question up is I also just want to bring to the board's attention. And I think with, you know, with the diversity we have on the board in terms of the profession, professions that people have, you know, being a business owner myself, the concern is not so much just about policy and social distancing. I think the concern would be of people getting together. Just a large group of people in one building, you know, where people are still battling an infectious disease that has no vaccine. So, again, speculation or not, my concern is whether September will even happen physically or online. That's, that's a potential thought. I'm not saying that will happen. But I just want everyone to be aware of the fact that we might have to be prepared for something we've never been, never been prepared for. 2008 didn't have a contagion or some sort of infectious disease that could affect the health of the kids. And the scary part about the virus is that it's, people are carrying it asymptomatic. So I think, I think that's, that's part of my concern with the budget as in, you know, can we go on with what we have going on right now without any state aid? In case it gets to that point. Always prepare for the worst, and then the rest is bonus. That's how I look at it. But I just want the board to kind of contemplate that as well when they're thinking about the budget. Thank you very much. Sorry, I didn't mean to, you know, delay the meeting more, but just wanted to get some thoughts out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris. I just need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treibwizer? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.